Mr. Chair, we are live with the YouTube, so you can start your presentation now.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Good afternoon. Due to COVID-19, Committee of Adjustment public hearings are being conducted virtually by electronic means through Webex webinar and online digital platform and streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. Participants who have registered in advance will be able to make their presentations to the committee using Webex webinar, which is moderated by city staff. Anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Participants who have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator one person at a time. We also ask that you mute your devices until you are called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled and you would be reinstated as an attendee. The Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Members of the public and applicants are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance, and the host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. Land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Tipi, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety is amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the city of Toronto was called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that apply to the property, permissions to extend or alter lawfully non-conforming uses, and consents to sever properties to create new laws. Anyone in attendance today who wants to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body, in the event of an appeal, will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee rendered here today, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body or in some limited circumstances to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government recently amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. As of November twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-two, only the applicant, the Minister of Housing, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. The hearing procedure will be as follows this afternoon. I'll call each order in the order listed in the agenda. Starting at item number twenty-one, we will however, as a preliminary matter, deal with and dispense with several items that have been flagged for deferral. Other than that, we go in order, and then when an application is uncontested, which means, doesn't mean it's uncontested, it means that there's no one present to make submissions against it in person. The agent or applicant may proceed with the presentation if desired, where the committee does not require a presentation. Applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee members may ask questions of each applicant and/or then take the matter into the committee for decision. Each speaker, including the applicant, duration is given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. And the clock is showing in the room, and you'll be notified when you reach the five-minute mark and asked to wrap up. When addressing the committee, please start off by clearly stating your name and address for the record, and please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent goes first and makes their presentation to the committee on contested application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals made at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application substantially revised in order to ensure that the revised application is accurate. And then all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they finish their presentations. And when all other speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues and answer those questions that were raised by the speakers. That will then mark the end of discussion on the matter, and the matter is then taken into the committee for decision. Oh, something I forgot to ask this morning. Are there any declarations of interest of panels or staff over the items in this afternoon's time slot? Okay, none to declare, thank you. So I guess the next order of business is deferrals we have, as we generally have a consolidated memo from the planning department indicating which files and for which reasons they wish matters deferred. We didn't have any this morning on that list. We do have two on that list this afternoon, I believe, twenty-one and twenty-six, as well as, I believe, member Palmer noticed quite astutely that there was a notice issue on the applications for twenty-nine and thirty-two, so those will also have to be deferred for notification and will call those in addition to the planning memo items. And then there's also item number twenty-four, members, if you've noticed. It appears that one TRCA is requesting a deferral, and perhaps we'll deal with these. We normally do the other department requests as we hear the application. But let's first deal with the other four, which will cut down on our volume this afternoon, I take it. So I guess the first one, is that item number twenty-one? Is that one of the ones on the, just trying to find my page? Ah, twenty-one. One sixty-nine Lake Shore, Lake Promenade Head, item number twenty-one. It's for detached dwelling with detached garage with thirteen variances. We have an applicant's deferral request. It was listed on the list as deferral reasons one, two, and six. Six being the one requested by the applicant. So we have three people on the line to check in with. Firstly, the agent, Mehran Hadari. Welcome, sir. Then we'll have Andy Choles from the Rape Bear Association, as well as we have a neighbor next door at one seventy-one to check in with. So we do have a request both by staff and by the applicant to defer this application. I trust to make changes. So let's hear from Mr. Hadari. Yes, sir, we're getting an echo. You have to turn off one of your devices.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I can confirm Mehran's logged in into two different spots. So what I'll do right now is go ahead and expel one of his accounts, and so it'll just be the one. Bear with me.
Thank you.
All right, Mehran, try again.
Hello?
Yes, sir, we can hear you, yes.
Okay, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and member of the committee. My name is Mehran Hadari from PMB Design Group, one zero nine zero Dunleavy Road. And the reason that we are differing the application with the communication with the staff, with the planning staff, we decided to change the design for their satisfaction, and we sent the revised drawing. And based on the conversation that we have with the planning, we decided to send a new design with the new zoning notice and comes back to the committee in the future and talk with the neighbor, also about their concern and the language association too.
Okay, so you have thirteen variances, you have the Rape Bear Association. Planning Department, I'm sure, is wants you to make changes. That's why you're on their list. Any questions for Mr. Hadari? If not, we'll have, we'll check in just with the other two parties on the line, just to touch base on the deferral issue. Okay, Mr. Choles, you're next on the list.
Afternoon. The LBNA agrees with the decision to defer the application later dates. Hope the applicant will take time to seriously look at the design, eliminate many of these numerable variances, and have a good day and a good holiday, if it's not too early to say that.
Okay, same to you, Mr. Choles. Be well. And Annette Heatherington, the next door neighbor at one seventy-one, similarly to just weigh in and on the issue of the deferral, not on the merits.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair members, Annette wanted to originally be appearing on video during our microphone check. She confirmed she did not. So I will unmute her for her to speak. Go ahead, Annette.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. The, I just ask that the design taken to into consideration the two things that I raised in my, my letter. I hadn't seen those or seen this package when I initially had said, given my approval. The first one is the geotechnical requirements to ensure that there is no damage done to our foundation. I just wanted to give the context of that. Because the houses are so close together, there have been
We're just not going to deal with this in the merits today, just on the issue of the deferral.
So that's fine.
I don't think you can state on the record, you know, I figured you want to state in the record after the minutes. But there'll be time for that and certainly for non, for geotechnical, which is not what we, you know, we're about here anyway.
No problem.
But hopefully back with a better proposal.
Yes, appreciate that. So yes, it's just the two items that I, that I mentioned, the geotechnical, and then the other one is the, is specific to the walkout, which is A zero-two drawing, and I'm, look forward to what they come back with.
Okay, happy holidays. We'll see you here in the new year. Or maybe we won't, if I don't have any problems with the application at that time, so. I speak out of turn. Okay, so members, we've heard from the applicant, hopefully good reason for the deferral to make changes, satisfy the neighbors and the Long Branch Association. So can I have a motion to defer, please?
Happy to make that motion for deferral for numbers one, two, and six.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by, Mr. Taylor, thank you. All in favor? Okay, item twenty-one is deferred. Okay, we're gonna jump over to item number twenty-six, fifty-eight Belvedere Road. This is for
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Number twenty-four, we had a correspondence this morning at nine oh two AM that the applicant is requesting deferral.
Okay, thank you.
It's not just TRCA, it's the applicant himself.
Okay, so in that case, let's deal with that in turn. Thank you for pointing that out. I didn't see that. And I know in the other departments, we normally do it as we go through the agenda. So, okay, item number twenty-four. Keep it in order, easier to keep track of anyway, is Meran Subzumi. AD Ravencrest Drive, he is the only speaker. Welcome, Mr. Subzumi.
Thank you.
Okay, you're looking for, I understand, TRCA was looking for a deferral as pursuant to their December first memo, looking for further confirmation of the stable top of slope and feasibility of the prospective development. And now you're asking for that as well, correct?
That's correct. We got comments from TRCA very recently, so we need a bit of time to correspond with them in order to ensure a smooth proceedings in the future.
Okay. Very good, members. Any questions of Mr. Subzumi? And if not, can we have a motion to defer?
All I move for deferral to allow the applicant to speak to the conservation authority about their design.
Thank you. Seconded for Mr. Palmer's motion. There was a tie, so Mr. Bellissimo. All in favor? Okay, the matter is unanimously is deferred, and we'll see you back here again. Mr. Subzumi, happy holidays.
Thank you, and happy holidays and happy new year. Thank you.
Okay, so that's twenty-four off the list now, number twenty-six. And the speaker for that is, we have two. We have the neighbor fifty-six as well, and then the, the agent for the applicant, Dave Philo. This is an application, we have it on the consolidated memo for item for reasons two and six, six being at the applicant's request, and it looks like there's a missed variance or two on this application. So Dave Philo, you on the line?
Mr. Chair members, before we get to Dave, I want to bring to your attention that the area resident, Nancy Newton, is not present on the call at this time.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Philo?
Yeah, I'm Dave Philo, and I'm actually, I'm not a representative, but I'm a neighbor as well. I'm at, I'm the backdoor neighbor at fifty-three Lynn Grove.
Oh, hold on, okay. Okay, who's, there's no one listed speaking for the, it says you're the agent.
Oh, no, no.
So, okay, so you're a neighbor, so this matter is, it has to be deferred. There's, well, it's being requested to be deferred both by city staff as well as now in the recent email. It looks like I got an email from the agent. Sorry, what's your name, sir?
I'm Dave Philo.
Hey. Okay, does anyone see there's something in the
Mr. Chair members, we have the agents. I've got, we've gone and looked up the agent's name. We're gonna reach out to the agent now to confirm their presence. I don't have them, I don't have them in our list right now, though, as attendees in the meeting.
Okay, so why don't we, I don't know if we have to hold this down then?
Correct, Mr. Chair, yeah, we're gonna reach out to them now.
Just for you, who is the agent? I can write it on my list.
The agent is James Burbacher, B U, B R U, B A C H E R, James Burbacher. Thank you. So we're gonna reach out to them now.
Okay, so let's, the next deferral item is I think these are the ones caught by Mr. Palmer. Item number twenty-nine, twenty-four D Avenue. And Murray Fern is the agent on this application. Mr. Fern, welcome.
Good afternoon, committee members. The, my technician at the, or the technician at the Committee of Adjustment said you'd be aware of what this deferral was about. I think the, the notice of Committee of Adjustment that was sent out was sent out as a consent variance rather than a minor variance. So it has to be re-sent out.
Yes. Yeah, this matter was previously deferred from November tenth, twenty-twenty-two. Now I guess you're looking for another short delay that was to identify two variants of the time, not previously identified, and unfortunately, it looks like this in the other application went out under section fifty-three and not under section forty-five. And so that's a, even though it's a tactical matter, we're advised by staff that that has to be recirculated. So members, can I have a motion to defer? Can't, I don't have a visual on editing everyone. Mr. Palmer is the one who caught it, so.
I'm, I'm happy to make that motion for deferral, yes.
Have a second for that? Mr. Palmer?
Can we just stop sharing the screen?
Yeah, I'm, don't got it. I don't have everybody here. Mr.? Okay, all in favor, the matter is deferred, okay?
And that's to January twenty-sixth.
A specific date? Okay, we get the available dates. That's good. And again, similarly for item number thirty-two, which was previously deferred from September fifteenth, Zero Titan Road, north-south. Again, this, for the same reason, and the speaker on this application is David Eagleman. Welcome, Mr. Eagleman.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and committee members. Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, as you know, similar to the last application, there was an error on the notice where this went out as a consent rather than a minor variance, so we do need to defer the application today.
Correct. Okay, members, can I have a motion, please? Mr. Bellissimo? Okay, seconded by Mr. Taylor, thank you. All in favor, it's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Eagleman. I think we're gonna see you here later this afternoon.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and committee.
And that one is also for January twenty-sixth.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're just waiting on finding, finding the agent who was not identified in the speakers list.
Mr. Chair, I can confirm that we have made phone contact with the agent, and we have sent him a fresh email with the link to join the meeting, so as soon as they join, I'll let you know.
Okay. So in that case, I guess we can, now that the housekeeping matters are done, I guess we can go back up to the top of the afternoon agenda, and I believe, yes, it's item twenty-two, twenty-sixth Matane Court. And it's an application for a second-story addition over the existing dwelling, a two-story rear addition. I can't read, but new, a new rear deck and a new second-story addition over the existing front porch. There are seven variances. Planning has provided us with recommended condition of approval. Being to construct is illustrated. And I believe that's all we have. Unless I'm missing something. And the speaker for this is Tony Henriques. Welcome, welcome, Tony.
Good afternoon. My name is Tony Henriques. I'm the applicant for this application.
Yes, okay.
We are proposing a second-story addition above the existing ground floor, and we're proposing a minor, small addition above a deck at the rear. Basically, I can go through the variances quickly.
Are you, I don't know if we have to do that. Are you okay? You're the only speaker on this, unless members have any questions. You're fine with the recommended planning condition?
Yes, I have been in contact with them.
Okay, we haven't, I don't see any urban forestry conditions on this property. So let's see if anyone has any questions for you, or if someone's ready for a motion. Or has any questions as to, I guess the coverage includes the, a, is that included in a structure of any kind, accessories?
It, it includes the basement, and that's due to the grade sloping so far down at one corner of the front of the house, which brings the average down, so by a couple of inches, technically. The basement is included. Without the basement, our real proposed floor index would be zero point four-six, which is one percent more than what the bylaw allows.
And your coverage, though, is over, but I see it's a relatively small amount. It's in, in terms of about twenty-four square meters.
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Henriques, or is someone ready for a motion?
Danny Bellissimo? You can hear my telephone speaker. Sorry about that. I get my, move my phone out of here. One second, please. Sorry about that. I had my speakerphone at the same time.
Are you making a motion, Danny?
Yes, I am. I just wanted to apologize for that voicemail back there. Yeah, I was concerned about variance number one, but now I understand that this is a subject to the established grade issue, which is very new. And I'm very familiar with problems with established grades, so I would like to move for approval. There are no people here opposing it, and so I find variances are minor in nature. I don't believe there are any conditions. Thank you. Oh, sorry, there is a condition. From planning. Plan is condition, no forestry condition, but there was planning condition. Development be constructed as illustrated, a plan submitted October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, and held on file by the Committee of Adjustment as relates to proposed floor space index.
Yeah, they want it tied to the plans, and I'm happy to second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Augustin. All in favor? It's unanimous. You have your approval. Thank you, Henriques.
Thank you very much, and have a good day.
Okay, item number twenty-three is forty-two Deerhurst Avenue. This is to construct a two-story rear addition, a second-story addition above the existing dwelling, and a new front porch and a new rear deck with a basement walkout. Urban Forestry is looking for conditions two and five, five being a refusal. And all we have are two harvest reports on file. The speaker for this application is Eddie Perez, so it looks like, and how many, we have where the variances here? Yeah, there are three variances, sorry. Okay, Mr. Perez.
Well, hi, good afternoon, Chairman and committee members. As you can see, we have three minor variances on this application. We're excavating very, not to, only at the rear, it's a second-story addition. Our impact on the trees will be very minimal, and I'll, I'll deal with forestry through the process, and I'll make sure that we oblige by what they require. So I feel that this application is very minor in nature, and it meets the four tests. Thank you very much.
Okay, were they looking for a refusal? If I don't see a standalone memo on this, like we usually get with a refusal. Does anyone else have that, or? Am I right? They were looking for a two and five?
Yeah, they were looking for refusal, and in, in the event that we approved it, condition number two.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. In your package, can you make me a post item?
Standby. I can make you a presenter. Let's work. Yeah. All right, Barb, you're presenter now. Go ahead.
So this is the report we have from Urban Forestry on Deerhurst to refuse variance number three.
It's the exterior stairs. It says its approval required the removal of the healthy bylaw-protected tree number one and the permanent loss of iup planting space. If despite Urban Forestry's recommendation, committee approves, et cetera, et cetera, submit a complete application for permit to injure or remove a city-owned tree. So, Mr. Perez, that's what it looks like they were, you know what they're talking about? Is there?
Yeah, I, yeah. That's correct, and we'll, we'll go through the process with the urban forestry like we do in all our projects, and we'll make sure that we meet whatever their standards are.
Okay. Members, any other questions? Or Mr. Perez? Mr. Taylor?
Yes, in Urban Forestry's consolidated memo, they also requested condition two related to a privately-owned tree.
Yeah, let me look at the survey. There is no private-owned trees nearby. They're all farther at the rear, and we won't be impacting any of those. So I don't know which private, private tree. I'm looking at the survey and the harvest report right now. There is no private trees within the construction that we're proposing.
Well, they did request it, and I'm not presuming where this is going, but we typically impose the condition even though it may not make sense to you.
Yeah, you can
And give you the opportunity to negotiate that away with
Yeah, yeah, you, you can impose it on, and I'll, I'll deal with that as well.
Yeah, if it doesn't exist, you know, if it's, there's no private tree, there's no private tree impacted. Okay, someone ready to wave with a motion? Mr. Taylor?
I'm satisfied the variances requested meet the four tests, and I move approval subject to urban forestry conditions one and two.
Thank you.
Any Bellissimo seconds of motion?
Thank you. All in favor? Unanimous approval. Thank you, Mr. Perez.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Same to you, sir. You will. Okay, so twenty-four, we're still dealing now. Twenty-five, then, that's the, we're waiting for the deferral still. But let's go to item number twenty-five, eighteen Bellman Avenue. This is an application for a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. There are five variances. And we have supporting materials, photos, and of the existing house, two letters of support from thirty-six. It looked like thirty-four A, I couldn't read it. Similar handwriting as the other letter. We'll hear about that. And that's, I believe, Urban Forestry looking for conditions one and two. And I believe that's all we have. Letters of support, that's it. The speaker on this application is Wojtek Stanisak. Welcome, sir.
Yes, okay. As you know, my name is Wojtek Stanisak, and I represent, of course, owners of this property located at Bellman. So the purpose of this application to the committee is addressing So the purpose of this application to the committee is addressing not five comments, but four comments. Because comments number three and four are identical. I think that I mean they're sonar repeated. So from the zoning examiner.
Yeah, let's uh hold on a second. Uh unless that's the other side. Maybe it's a side exterior wall out on two sides. Madam Secretary Treasurer, can you weigh in on this while we we resolve the preliminary issue about the notice? Is three and four repetition or ones on one side, ones on the other side?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So you may need the two variances. I'm asking if Barb Bertozic or someone in staff will weigh in on that.
You drafted the notice. Can you answer why it's been split into two variances?
So so, okay, so it's can it can be counted as two variances, but you know, the reason of the same because. So this is the modern modern, let's say, uh house design. So that's that's why. That's why. Okay.
Okay, let's let's talk about then about your uh your other variances. It's the the flat roof height, roof height and GFA and the width of the driveway.
So the item number number one, yes. Can I continue?
Yeah, go ahead.
The the item number one states that that you know that not any uh single family dwelling having grossed on area greater than forty percent. The zoning are M bracket in bracket U three and in in the bracket X eighteen does not specify exactly the proposed modified basement is being added to GFA. In the first submission, we did not add the basement area and proposed GFA was less than than forty three percent. Finally, zoning examiner added basement which containing mechanical room, existing basic washroom, existing recreation room, which result fifty-one percent. So I think that there is a two provisions for this zoning. So that's why it was misunderstanding. Because on the first submission, so the zoning examiner has no no objection regarding the forty-two percent of this of this. Of course, it exists forty percent of this of this uh proposal. But you know, finally, he he said that only forty percent is it is the limited GFA.
Okay, so the maybe the basement is too far. We'll hear is the basement counts is further out of the ground. Uh maybe Mister Mister Bellisimo can look at the plans as we go through. So does anyone have any questions or you you want to continue, sir?
No, no.
The driveway width?
Okay, so can I go uh item numbers? So the owners of this house like the proposed shape of the roof, which is almost flat, not really flat, similar to the roof proposed in the neighborhood. They want to keep the shape of this roof. That's why they decided ask committee to match the style of the adjacent neighborhood. So that that that's 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 the only let's say problem. Number three and four, uh there is. Yes.
Very mild, yeah.
Yeah, the reason is the same. So we needed to increase the height of the building less than five percent due to current requirements of the floors to be minimum nine foot, nine feet height. This result higher building height uh means exactly thirty-two centimeters. And the uh item number five, we wanted to remain existing driveway. But of course, we can reduce the size of that of this uh and then we increase the soft landscaping. So this is not an issue. So but the existing driver, it it has four meter ninety-seven centimeters. So that that's why we remain existing driver, but we can reduce the size. Yes.
Thank you, sir. Um does anyone have any questions for Mister Stanisak or someone ready for a motion?
Danny Bellisimo is ready for a motion if there are no questions. I think uh the reason for the basement being included, Mister Chair, as you asked, and have a quick look at it. Is it may it may have to do with this whole issue of established grade. The drawing just shows average grade. And established grade is determined by the two neighboring properties. So I think we just go with what the plan examiner has noted here. And also uh the items three and four are different. If you look at the section numbers is B bracket I and B bracket II. B and four. So they they must be separate, separate ones. It's look like they're the same, but they're not. Based on the section number of the bylaw. So I'm going to include all five in my motion uh just to be safe. We will try move for approval of the five variances conditional on forestry one and two, I believe.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Thank you, Mister Bellisimo. Seconded for Mister Bellisimo's motion. Ms. Alderson, it was almost a tie. All in favor? Looks like it's gonna be another unanimous one. Yes, it is. Thank you, Mister Stanisak. Be well. Happy holidays.
Mister Chair.
Okay, our next two app. Yes.
I'd like to bring to your attention, we have the um property owner for item number twenty-six, fifty-eight Belvedere on the line. Uh the agent let us know he couldn't be here for it, but the property owner is present to request the deferral. So the property owner's name is Logan Middleton.
Okay. Logan Middleton.
And as a note.
Dad, you should yeah, because Dave Filo and I even thought I saw the name on an email somewhere in terms of the request for deferral. But turns out he's a neighbor. So let's first deal with uh Logan McMillan.
Yep, um it's Logan Middleton and um additionally uh David, David is still present on the call, but Nancy still is not present on the call this time. Now I'm gonna go ahead and unmute Logan now. Go ahead, Logan.
Logan Milton Middleton?
Is that working, guys?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. So yeah, uh I'm I'm not as, I don't know what the word is. Uh experienced in in this process as some of the other guys you've been speaking to today because I'm stepping in for my uh project manager who's got the bug that's going around. Uh so I don't really know what uh I'm supposed to do here. I I see the variances. Um I mean, maybe just.
Perhaps I'll help you. Did we have a request both by community planning? We normally do this at the outset of the afternoon session. So we go through the deferral. So there's been a request by the community planning department on their on their memo in order to have this matter deferred.
Yep.
And looks like your agent or you or someone emailed uh in the additional materials. I just don't have it open now that it needs to be deferred because there's at least there's a uh uh variance or two missing. Uh if someone can open up the additional materials, I don't know who sent that memo. I guess I can close my package and open my additional materials.
Mister Chair, we're looking to get it up shortly here.
Yeah. Cause I could have sworn I saw Mister Filo's name on it. Item twenty-six, here we go. Oh, it's opposition. But then below the yeah, below your sit Mister Filo's signature, it says what looks like a memo. After review of the documents available, there appears to be one or two missing variances. So I thought that was something written, I don't know if anyone did, from the applicant. But it looks like so there is not a there was not a but meanwhile, your agent's not even here. So that's a bit of a. I guess perhaps your agent thought because it was on the the uh memo from cause community planning that they didn't have to attend. I don't understand.
Yeah, no, that's that. We were we were exchanging notes this morning. Um we were under the impression this was deferred. Um and then just uh which worked out well because he was ill. But I I obviously we screwed that up.
Yeah, because community planning was looking for a deferral for their reason number two. Uh they want to meet. They want you to make changes and things like that. So and uh it looks like he didn't consent. It was just my misreading or uh the email from Mister Filo who we're going to hear from in a second. But in any event, he's not here. So. Let's uh see. Obviously, we it appears from a neighbor that there's some uh variance missing. But community planning is also asking for deferral. So let's just quickly weigh in because he's been waiting in line with Mister Filo at fifty-three Lind Grove. Welcome, sir.
Yes, uh hi, Chairmembers. Um that's right. I'm Dave Filo. I'm at fifty-three Lind Grove. Uh back on to Logan. Um you're just talking with the neighbors. We're new to the neighborhood as well and I and and first of all, I guess uh you know, the neighbors do appreciate that uh you know, people are upgrading their homes uh just to for the betterment of the community. Uh I think our main concerns were just.
Yes, sir, sir. Unfortunately, today you're not going to get into the merits. It's just.
Okay, fine.
For the deferral, you'll certainly have it. Hopefully, they'll make the changes that are appropriate to you and then if necessary, you'll comment.
That'd be great.
You'll be re- you will be re notified if you receive the notice in the mail.
Okay.
Uh but when it's and I when it's going to be rescheduled for. The can add added confusion is on my attendance list here today, you were listed as the agent and the agent's not here. So it was like a comedy of errors. But uh now we have it all straightened out. So I take it you have no objection to this matter being deferred.
No, not at all. It's fine.
Okay, you'll have a chance to weigh in on the merits in the new year when and if this matter gets brought back on and you have continued to have issues with it.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Um next, oh, we don't have the neighbor at fifty-six next door on the line. Wonderful. Okay. So Logan Middleton, uh representing, you're the owner. Uh you wanted to for your agent's health, community planning wanted to defer right and the reason number two. And uh members can I have a motion to defer, please?
Danny Bellisimo moves to defer based on community planning requirement.
Okay, thank you.
I'm happy to second that motion.
Thank you, Laura Alderson. All in favor? Matter is deferred. Thank you, uh Logan Middleton. And thank you, Mister Filo.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, uh next two applications um are uh for under section fifty-three of the act, consent and associated variances and associated with the consent to sever uh properties and two substandard lots. Uh fortunately, we only have two in a row, like the four in a row we had last time, including two that were uh caused us to spend about two and a half hours on those two applications. So uh these are rather simple, especially the first um kudos to the applicant for doing a severance and coming back with a few variances. Uh it is one ninety Dixon Road. It's an app- application for consent to sever the property to two undersized residential lots and the road dedication to the city for road widening requirements to demolish the existing dwelling on the property. And on each side's B and C to applications, B and C to construct a new detached dwelling and with a garage and a detached garage in the rear yard, requiring only two variances in B and one variance in C being lot frontage and front yard setback and lot frontage, but absolutely no variances other than lot frontage and size related to the build, which is others should sit up and take notice of this. Um so the applicant is Ambrosia Frias. Uh at um the agent for the applicant and we have the neighbors from one uh one eighty-four Dixon Road present on the line as well.
Mister Chair and members, I'd like to bring to your attention that the area neighbors were a call-in user at the start of the session, but have since dropped off the call this time.
Okay. Okay, so let's go to Ambrosia Frias and uh. So again, as we have normally have these applications, we also have comments from uh engineering construction services, revised one as well. We have they want conditions of approval. Uh stage one to archaeological assessment. Planning has advised they have no comment. And uh I'll turn it over to you, sir. Ambrosio Frias.
Yeah, basically, these are uh.
Can you please introduce yourself? Give me your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Ambrosio Frias, uh eight kilometer drive Ajax, uh representing the owners. Um yeah, this is a an application for consent and uh uh variance for construction of new dwelling unit and retention of uh the new uh of the existing uh dwelling unit on the uh existing at hundred ninety Dixon Road.
Okay.
Base up.
Go ahead.
So basically, this is uh uh consent to sever the the one ninety into two properties while conveying uh a portion of the front uh frontage to city uh which has an area of uh point thirty-six by twenty-two by twenty-two point. How much is that? Twenty-two point sixty-six with an area of eight point two. So we have gone through all of this uh and uh we are in agreement and uh we consent uh for the uh for this uh conveyance uh to city. So uh part one. Part one, that the uh minor variance that we are requesting is for a frontage of eleven point thirteen uh meters uh with a requirement of thirteen point five. So that we are asking uh for a minor uh variance approval on uh part two, that A, which is the new one. Uh we are asking for uh eleven point.
Yeah. Yes, sir. I'm I'm amazed. I'm amazed. You've come to you've split this lot. The lot frontage variance is not, as you said, it's instead of thirteen point five, it's eleven point one three and on the other side, eleven point five three. In fact, on on the on the second one, you don't even have a lot area. You have a lot frontage. And then unlike everybody else who comes to committee, you propose two dwellings which trigger no other variances whatsoever. You should have been here last week on two applications. The request was, as the counselor noted, egregious. So this is uh in the uh everyone seems to be fine with this. There's no objection. Um we'll see if committee members have. You're aware that you have to carry out the heritage departments requiring a phase one and phase two or stage one and stage two archaeological assessment of the entire property. You're aware of their memo dated December first?
Uh. You're talking to me, right?
Yes, sir.
No, 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 I'm not aware of that. I'm not aware of that.
Is that on this application? I didn't miss it, did I? One ninety Dixon. Yeah, okay. Yes, there's a there's a memo.
Oh.
Requesting before the issuance of official certificate, if you get your you get the uh sec- the seven, you get your applications approved here today.
Okay.
They are wanting wants. They want there to be a uh uh an archaeological assessment. Instead of memo, perhaps staff can put it on the board for you.
A a a condition uh CFA with the.
Condition of approval, yes, for heritage assessment. Leave it some.
So yeah, well, yeah, we'll have to submit to that. Uh yeah, that is a requirement we'll have to do.
Yeah, there for that reason, they're in the next application, they're asking for it also. If that's any solace to you. Um, okay, members, any questions for uh for the agent? Mister Frias or someone ready for a motion?
Mister Chair, before we go to the motion, um the area resident has come back on to the call.
Okay. I'm they got dropped or something. So yes, so we have the neighbor at one eighty-four Dixon Road. Either Mister or Miss Sinop Sinopoli.
In this case, it'll be Dominic, Mister Chair.
Okay, welcome, sir.
Hi, welcome. Thank you for this tonight or this afternoon.
Thanks. I don't know if we were able to hear the submissions, uh my introduction of the office. Uh and uh there uh the agent's presentation. Um you're the neighbor next or two doors away or next door?
I'm right next door to Sam.
Okay, and uh we don't have any letters. Do you have any concerns with this application?
Oh, uh just that uh my my concern is with the the lot had um Sam had taken some soil from his previous build and thrown it into the back, lifting up the back area. So I'm just concerned, is there going to be a drainage that will leave out to sours when uh with excess rain and so forth? Because now the property seems to be a lot higher than um than uh the neighboring, including mine especially.
Okay, perhaps Mister Ambrosia, I guess there's going to be a whole new two properties uh built. I assume the property is going to be graded, but I'll let Mister uh Mister Frias answer that on by his client's behalf.
That's cool. Thank you.
Mister Ambros- uh Mister Frias?
Ah, yeah. Yeah, we'll uh we'll uh see to it that that this uh taken care of. And uh definitely there would be a grading plan uh for for this uh property. So. The neighbor should not be concerned at all.
Okay. Okay, did you hear that, sir? Mister Sinopoli?
Yeah.
He said that will be in, and you know, obviously, it's a complete, it's not like a. You're taking and adding on to houses, a whole new build, two two new properties. And uh it's not, but my question to you is, do you have, that's it, is there any issue with the built form? Uh or the fact, actually, there is no built form variance, so my question would be, do you have any objection to the splitting of a lot? Normally, I'd ask you, do you have any objection to splitting a lot? And the two big houses they're gonna put on each side that require variances, but in fact. This is one of the first times I've ever seen where there, the two houses aren't gonna trigger any variance other than the fact that the lot's a little smaller. And a little less frontage.
Yeah, it not shouldn't be a concern there, none at all, just like the drainage.
Okay, no concern with the actual severance. Thank you, okay, have a wonderful day, sir. Uh let's see if committee members have any questions, either for you or the agent and or if they're ready to weigh in with a motion here. Mister Taylor.
Yeah, thanks, Mister Chair, uh yeah, I would echo your sentiment that this is kind of a model uh. Project here, uh severance that uh you know, the lots are very consistent, what's up, up and down the the street. Uh. The variances reflect the fact that there's no big issue, they don't need. Uh you know, very minor frontage issue and a small setback uh on on one of the parts of lots. So um yeah, I'm satisfied with the the uh the appropriateness of the consent and I move approval of that subject to. Engineering and Construction Services conditions plus the standard conditions of consent. And with respect to the variances, there's only three, they're very minor. Uh meet the other tests under the planning act. And I move approval of the variances for both parts one and two, subject to urban forestry conditions, two and three. And the heritage department conditions.
Okay, thank you, Mister Taylor, for that motion, I see Mister Bellisimo has his hand up. You're seconding that, sir? Okay, all in favor? It's unanimous and uh thank you to the neighbor for weighing in and Mister Freas. If you're still in the line, you may wanna stay uh stay on and listen to the next application, that's one where. I was mistaken, I said they were both, this one has a a little more of the type we normally see where they're uh. For more according, at least that's what uh community planning feels, so if you wanna listen, uh watch on YouTube. Okay, uh. Thank you, having said that, uh segue into the next application, items twenty-eight A, B and C, thirty-two Belman Avenue. Uh similar to the la- last application, this is consent to sever the existing property into two undersized residential lots. Demolish the existing dwelling and to construct in each such undersized lots. A new detached dwelling requiring variance zoning bylaws outlined in applications B and C. Uh to the uh retained and conveyed lots respectively, each requiring five variances of the zoning bylaw. And uh looking beyond just the number of variances, a lot area and a lot frontage uh. About half of what's required in the lot area, a little more than half in the lot frontage. Coverage variance of ten percent. The GFA variance of point seven seven and side yard setbacks. So we have uh uh economic uh. Economic Engineering Construction Services standard conditions in the event of approval, we have a cover letter. Planning recommending refusal and heritage in the event of approval, asking for that. Stage one and two uh archaeological and uh. Archaeological um assessment and urban forestry condition number three. Um speaker on this application is.
So Clark, we also have additional material up at the side of um number twenty.
Is that only recently the the stuff that came in this morning or in the first?
That's the additional material from before is item twenty-eight, additional to revise draft our plan. Just for the, just for the record.
Thank you, sir, I didn't have that noted on my plan, I a lot noted here. And um. Finally, I guess we have, yes, the speaker on this application, that's what I was looking for.
Mister Chair and Members, I'd like to bring to your attention that the area resident. Um Dorina is not on the call, we received written correspondence from her that she was not going to participate after she registered.
Okay, we don't have a letter from her either.
Just internal to just.
Right, but we don't any, we don't know what her rejection was of any, so the one speaker we have is Brayden Lebowski. Uh the agent for the app- applicant.
Uh good afternoon, uh can you hear me clearly?
Loud and clear.
Fantastic, thank you very much. Uh and so, good afternoon, committee members, staff and public, my name is Brayden Lebowski and I am an urban planner for the Big Leary Group. I'm pleased to be here on behalf of our client Marco Bianconi, who is the owner. To present the proposed consent and minor variance applications for the lands at thirty-two Belman Avenue. Uh the proposed consent and minor variances as identified in the zoning waivers. Provided in our submission are consistent with the provincial policy statement and conform to the growth plan for the Green and Golden Horseshoe. As well as the City of Toronto official plan. This proposal provides for more compact housing, promotes an efficient land use pattern and supports the goal to direct growth. Towards settlement areas within delineated built boundaries on full servicing, thus supporting the achievement of complete communities. Pursuant to section forty-five dash one of the planning acts, the proposed minor variances do satisfy the four tests. Of for minor variances. These proposed variances are in keeping with the general intent and purpose of the City of Toronto official plan. Citywide zoning bylaw and a topco zoning bylaw and are desirable and appropriate for the development and use of the lands and are minor in nature. Uh Mister Speaker, you did provide a summary of the proposed variances, so I'll I'll for I'll for go repeating that. Uh but we do advise that the proposed minor variances are in keeping with the character of the immediate context area. There are similar homes and lots consisting of similar or same frontages and lot areas that exist within the neighborhood. Of immediate note, our addresses thirty-four and thirty-six Belman Avenue directly beside the subject site. Uh having the same for lot frontages, lot areas, FSI and coverage, all variances for which we are seeking today. Elsewhere within this community and greater context area are five other examples of residential dwellings with lots of similar variances to our proposals. Uh a summary of those and breakdown of a detailed analysis was provided in the covering letter underneath table one and highlighted thereof. Uh furthermore, as far as I know, there are no comments from the public on the proposed application. So I would like to thank you for your time and I'm here to answer any questions committee members may have and I am seeking approval of the proposal today.
Okay, thank you, Mister Lebowski, that was uh. And I'm just looking at through your report here, you're right, I was gonna ask the same question, where are the neighbors, typically in this type of applications, you'd have a hole. Um I don't know. You'd have neighbors, you'd have these, you have a lot study in here in your materials here to support your position um. You you spout, you you know, you've stated the tests, but you didn't say sort of other than the property, you mentioned the property next door, but um.
I think a a good reference for that would be table one of our covering letter, I'm not sure if that could be shown on screen.
You can perhaps walk us through that, sir?
Absolutely, uh is that able to be shared on screen or should I be sharing mine?
No, we're gonna bring it up for you in a moment here.
Okay, okay, perfect.
Yeah, it's a useful, you know, prop map to look at, that doesn't. Just wanna see what your other.
It might be a little bit slower on my screen for pulling up, but I I'm currently looking at page two, which shows figure one and figure two, is that correct?
That's what's on the screen currently being displayed, correct?
Okay, great, uh I would I would ask that we go down to table one, which is located on page ten of my covering letter. Fantastic, great, uh so the seven. Lots that we referenced specifically within context area are all located within five hundred meters of the subject site. And they detail the address, the minor variance file number, the date of the approval. As well as the five different variances that we are seeking and how they are similar to what we are proposing.
Yeah, are these are these as a result of severances or these are existing lots?
These are all the results of severances and that is the result of uh also the minor variance file numbers that we have there. Were specifically for for variances, however, they are subject to severances as well. So if I may, I'd like to specifically reference thirty-four and thirty-six Belman Avenue.
Okay.
They would be what I would consider an immediate context area specifically would certainly be the next door neighbor.
Yeah.
Excellent example, I don't think you can get much closer.
I agree with that, yeah.
Thank you, yeah, uh if we look at thirty-four Belman Avenue as an example, uh you see lot areas severed for two hundred and thirty-two point five six square meters. We are seeking two hundred and thirty-two point two six, so very, very minor difference, similar, but same character.
So hold on, just as you're going through, I just checked back, can you discuss when you go through this? Are these, were these similar, like where you got uh? Seven point sixteens where twelve meter was required in similar lot areas? Like you're about half, as I mentioned, you know, on the lot area and you know, from twelve to seven or six two, were all these. Lots previously twelve foot requirements or were they ten foot or lesser requirement than or more, maybe there were fifteen foot requirements?
That's an excellent question.
Those were twelve meters that were cut down to seven point uh or nine point, whatever you're showing on this on this chart. Uh what were they previously or what was the requirement at the time, I assume it would be similar unless it's not the same area. This goes, please go back.
May I just uh add something right now? I know uh the agent is using thirty-four Belman as an example, but it is a corner lot and therefore needs to be treated and looked at differently.
Good, good points, Ms. Alderson. Let me just look at the location map.
The location map that we reference within our covering letter is located on the following page, which is figure three.
And I see it on the actual, so yeah, so that's a good point, that the one that was you talk about was the sort of the the corner, you're on the sort of the. I'm just looking at the lot pattern in here, it doesn't look like there's a bunch of skinny little lots here, so I don't know if thirty-four uh was. As Ms. Alderson pointed out, there was a particular reason for that. And uh maybe there isn't a reason to say it's the best example because it's, that was the corner. Thank you, Ms. Alderson, not that I'm I'm just playing devil's advocate, but um we do have a negative planning report and like I said. You're about half, so you know, your the onus is on you, shifts to you to show that that lot frontage and lot area is appropriate. I'm just surprised there aren't these neighbors here. Personally, that's my opinion, any uh anyone else like to weigh in or? Uh as I guess, sir, sorry, were you finished your phone presentation or we sort of uh? In questioning at this point, all right, started questioning.
No problem, I was just gonna further maybe go through how we had done the table.
Oh, yeah, I'd ask you about something to support the lot area and lot frontage uh variance in particular. And then from there, you move on to why the houses are also uh you know. If they're a bigger lot at that point, are they at point seven seven or or similar to what you're doing, so just proceed to see the way you want, sorry.
They are similar variances to what the the previous was, so where a lot area was four fifty. And they had received that minor variance is is same for lot area. For lot frontage, it was twelve to seven, for coverage, it was thirty-five to to the number that they had chosen. Floor space index, it was the same point six to point seven, so uh and then side yard setbacks, it's the same. All of those variances from the zoning bylaw were applicable to them as well. Uh and to speak a little bit more, as you had mentioned to the lot area and lot frontage reductions. Uh further to the four tests specifically for item number one, which references the character of the neighborhood. And prevailing size and configuration. The lot sizes that we had looked at specifically for thirty-four and thirty-six Belman Avenue, which are directly immediately adjacent. But then again, at five Robindale Avenue, uh sorry, Robindale Avenue and three hundred. Thirteenth Street, which are items F and G from the table. Are also referencing similar, if not smaller, lot areas to what we had found. And that is within the the greater area, not just along Belman Avenue. We see that the prevailing building type in the neighborhood is single detached homes, which is consistent here. Uh maintained driveway elevations and maintained rear yard and side yard setbacks for lots of similar severances. So uh that's uh, uh the are there any other questions or anything that I can elaborate on more to provide a little bit more clarity? The or justification further to what was written and spoken of?
Yeah, I'm still have my question on looking at things, I now pulled up my chart because I can can't see, it's too small on that on that one. So you pointed out these are your comparables and Ms. Alderson has pointed out that Belman, although it's close by, is some could be distinguishable. In terms of the others, I just still didn't wanna say, your lot frontages range from seven point uh six one. Or seven point four three, as you're asking for in this case, uh to eight point one, nine point one three. What were they before the split, I assume double that? And what is the requirement, is the same twelve meters of the requirement is here? This support back, you say these are should be approved?
That that is the case, so if we referencing five Robindale Avenue, which you had mentioned as seven point four three meters. The lot prior would have been fourteen point eight six. And it was split into two separate lots and the minimum lot frontage was twelve meters and they seeked seven point four three.
Okay, so so how close is Robindale and perhaps Ms. Alderson can help us on the area map? Is that a differently configured street than this particular street? I'm just saying.
Just down the street from Belman Avenue, so if you take Robin, uh sorry, if you take Belman Avenue down to uh Rimington. And then take a quick jaunt down and go down Robindale Avenue, you see um you see that five Robindale Avenue is just down the street there.
Okay, this, you know, this sort of has a. Sort of, I can looking at the interior crest and behind also, I guess, I'm being sort of, it is a sort of. Irregular shape, so anyway, does anyone else, anything I've asked, all I wanna ask, does anyone else have? Their questions for uh for the speaker?
I I apologize if I'm if I am interrupting, but I would like to highlight that this table is referencing specifically. Lot fabrics that were subject to consent and minor variance applications. That does not preclude that the neighborhood would also have lots with existing lot frontages. At or similar to what we are proposing today.
Yeah, and I appreciate that you gave us comparables that are similar, that's what I asked right off, are these all the result of consents?
Yes, yeah.
I appreciate that, thank you for that.
I am looking, can I just add, I am looking at five, it's five Robindale, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm looking at five Robindale, it's basically one house in from a major intersection. And what is the lot comparable with that one, how what's the width on that one?
So five Robindale Avenue is seven point four three meter lot frontage. And we are proposing seven point six two, so the lot frontage that we are proposing is actually greater than what was approved at Robindale.
Hmm, by.
By.
Pretty close, what did it beat?
Twenty centimeters, yes.
Yeah, so that that's the question, the question is, you know, city planning is against this, you point out this 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 chart. Uh and then the question is. Ms. Alderson being our sleuth here, you know, pointed out, you know, the corner position of the house next door. Uh same thing with Robindale, what about if we go through the rest of them, what about the two on Treeview? Uh there's three on Treeview, fifty, sixty-four and fifty-one, that you, you know, sort of rely upon. Um so those are all sort of the same street.
So I'd like to highlight that, yes, so the Treeview ones specifically, so for item C, D and E for Treeview Drive. Were to further justify for floor space index, side yard setbacks. Side of the minor variances, because we didn't just look at lot area and lot frontage, even though this has been the uh a greater focus of the conversation. FSI and side yard setbacks are also part of the minor variances that we're seeking. And so we wanted to highlight that within these minor variances in the neighborhood. That similar approvals were provided, so referencing fifty Treeview, for example. They had zero point nine meters on one and zero point six meters on the other, that's the same variance that we're seeking today and that's the same for fifty-one Treeview. And sixty-four Treeview Drive.
But were those created was created as a result of consents?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so and those were also twelve meter requirements for lot frontage?
Yes, those were also twelve meter requirements, however, I I will say that the lot frontage is. for fifty, fifty-one and sixty-four Treeview are all very, are all different. They are down from the twelve meters. However, the fifty Treeview is eight point one meter frontages. Fifty sixty-four is nine point one three, but fifty-one Treeview is seven point six two, which is the same lot frontages that we're proposing.
Okay, uh any other questions, Ms. Alderson, any other members?
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking at Treeview. It looks like uh we've got two oversized houses jammed onto a very small lot, but anyway, that's just my opinion.
Yep. Okay, any other video, have any questions for uh Mr. Lubuski or uh we bring it into committee and discussion and a decision and order? Mister Taylor.
Yeah, I think uh my hearing, most of the justification for this comes from the compliance with the provincial policy statement and some precedence within five hundred meters of this property. Uh one notable exception being thirty-four, thirty-four, three, four and B, Bellman to the north, which is Ms. Alderson pointed out are a corner situation. All in all, I, I don't see that the lots proposed here are compatible with the majority of the lots uh in the immediate context. I think that was pointed out by the community planning department as well. And I think um that view is not just from a look at the street or the location map, but the um uh the fact that uh three variances in particular point to the fact that this is not a severable situation. A lot areas are half required by the bylaw, the frontage is just over a half and the GFA is almost double what is permitted. So I think everything points to the fact that um the best planning case for this property is that it remain one lot with one house. Um and on that basis, I, I move approval of both the consent and the variance applications.
Thank you, Mister Taylor. I have a second for Mister Taylor's motion.
I did hear refusal, right?
Yes, she did.
Yeah, yes, yes.
I just wanted to clarify that, and I just wanted to add to that if it, you know, the developer, whoever's building this, you know, considered building a semi-detached unit, it would be much more palatable. I, I second that motion.
Sorry, Mister Taylor, you did say approval.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant refusal.
Okay, yes, well, that's what I was concerned about. So yeah, okay, so he did, he did clarify that it was refusal, not approval. So yes. I second that, I second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
In favor of refusal, yes.
All in favor of the refusal, Mister Belissimo, you as well, so it's unanimous. Okay, and again, just to point out from left to uh compared to the previous application, both ends of the spectrum, one application, minor lot area and lot uh frontage and no variances at all related to the build. Um it's not the number, it's the amount of the variances too. So uh thank you, uh Mister Lebowski, sorry about that. Um maybe I think has made a uh decision on this appropriately. And we didn't have the neighbor on the line on that one, correct? So, okay, twenty-nine has been deferred, so we'll move on to item number thirty, two nineteen Park Lawn Road.
Afternoon, committee.
This is a matter that was, we're all into deferrals from previous applications. This matter was deferred from October thirteen, twenty twenty-two to consult with planning and post a sign. Uh we have um just to construct a new detach, no, hold on a second, uh Serge is bear, bear with me for a second while I scroll down to this application. There's a lot, I guess there's a lot of materials because they include the uh the materials on the previous um hearing. So this matter was deferred back from October for a new rear covered uh deck, a new front porch. Uh replace the steps at the side door with a covered porch. There are eight variances. We have the minutes of the previous hearing, we have a cover letter, planning is looking for refusal. Transportation has conditions of approval. Uh they want this site plan revised, include certain items, and then we have the materials from the previous hearing. The speaker on this application is Matthew Rebo, uh agent for the applicant. Welcome, sir.
Uh afternoon, council. Thank you. Uh my name is Matthew Rebo, Perspective Views, one twenty-six Catherine Street, North Hamilton. I'm the agent representing the owners at two nineteen Park Lawn Road. Uh I have reviewed the online materials, including the staff reports. Due to the fact that planning staff are not able to support our application, I prepared a brief presentation to comment on the response to the report. Um we've also submitted a uh, a cover letter ourselves. Uh I just want to confirm if staff members have had a chance to review that um in contrast to the planning report. And lastly, um I do note that Transportation Works has approved our technical variance for the existing driveway width, so um again, I'm, I'm prepared to discuss the matters further.
Sir, um can I just ask through the chair of staff uh for the applicant, we got some additional material earlier today. And it looks like you've revised the variances that you want to seek. So are those the variances that you're seeking that are in the revisions we just got this morning? And if that's the case, it looks like some additional variances were added and new notice would be required. Just want clarification on one, what you're proceeding with, and two, if you're proceeding with the revisions, we're probably gonna need a deferral or adjournment because you're asking for additional variances.
So Mister Chair, if you look at what's in your package versus what's on the screen now, the notice for some reason split up the variance. So we have given proper notice, but it should have been combined as one. So two and three, originally two just referred to a projection, which didn't appear as a variance because the point four eight complies. But the issue is the setback from the north side. So the wording that's in front of you now in yellow is correct. We've just combined it properly. And same with variance number um four and five. It's the same variance. One related to front yard, one related to rear yard. The same section of the bylaw, so we just combined it for clarity.
Thank you. Um and, and I wonder if the planning staff had um similar miss uh misunderstandings as well, based on the report anyways. So I, I mean, if I could take a moment, I, I will speak to the planner's comments. Um one thing that, that was a little bit bothering to me was, was the wording and how it was represented. So planning staff concerned, um expressed concern about what we were proposing. Uh understandably, that just based on the numbers, it doesn't seem minor in nature, but again, what we're asking for is a, is a covered porch for increased amenity space to the, the family that, that resides there. They love to play um family games and, and meet as a family, host friends, et cetera. Um and so this is uh space to have games tables, uh lounge area, et cetera. The uh and, and yet there's still, it's a deeper lot, it's a narrow lot, but it's a deeper lot. And so there, it doesn't take away from the rest of the rear yard. It is very similar to five properties to the south in regards to how far back we're projecting. And it is only a single story, open framing, um we believe um appealing. Um regarding the comments on discussions with planning staff, we did defer mainly for clarity on zoning bylaws. And again, how to represent them in the hearing today. As you can see, um there were numerous amendments and revisions, but the drawings remained the same. Uh so I just want to make that clear. The um regarding conversations with planning staff, a- as noted in the report, we did go back and forth, however, uh early on, it was made clear to us that even if we were asked for variances to allow for the existing deck in the back, like if, so if we were to cut back about fifty percent, it still wouldn't be supported by planning staff, just because we're asking for approximately about ten percent um increase from what we're permitted. So um based on that, um we didn't know that there was much more to negotiate with planning staff other than uh, you know, we changed the front walkway to permeable pavers to um you know, decrease uh watershed, et cetera. Now, um some of the other claims, uh again, I think it's more appropriate if, if um, if I could address any uh committee members' concerns um rather than just pick apart the uh, the planning uh report, but um uh you know, I, I try to reason with the planning staff and um their concerns, but in comparison to the neighborhood, it is very suitable. Um if I could just read one section of my planning justification report, and that is the uh general intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. Subject properties designed residential detached zone, RD, which permits detached dwelling units. Proposed covered porch meets the minimum front yard setback requirement of four point five three meters as well as a minimum side yard setback of one point two meters to the south property line. Minor variance is being requested for the covered front porch on the north of property line for a setback of point three meters. The setback is consistent with the setback of this uh single existing detached house, which is um currently point two six meters. The existing dwelling on the property does not meet the current zoning regulations and is considered to be legal non-conforming. Variance is required to maintain symmetry of the front facade in order to improve the dwelling's curb appeal. Should the zoning regulation be adhered to, it would result in an unsymmetrical front porch and would be undesirable from the perspective of the homeowner and likely the rest of the neighborhood. As a result of variance for the roof eaves projection will also be required. The roof eaves projection variance being requested is point two meters, whereas the bylaw requires roof projection of point nine meters. Given the existing location of the dwelling and variances are not considered to negatively impact the neighboring dwelling as the proposed setbacks of roof eaves, eaves are consistent with the existing condition of the detached house. The proposed covered deck meets the minimum rear yard setback requirements of seven point five meters as well as the minimum side yard setback of one point two meters on the south. A minor variance is being requested for the rear deck on the north of the property line to reduce the setback from one point two to zero point six eight meters. This proposed reduction of approximately fifty percent as shown on the site plan. The existing dwelling has a side yard setback of point three six meters and the proposed covered deck has an increased setback from the existing structure and provides adequate room between the fence and property line and the proposed covered deck. I do want to add, one of the reasons why we didn't step it back further is there's a large window on the rear of the existing dwelling. And so by, by making any greater setback, we would have essentially a post to support the roof framing directly in front of the window. So of course, it's not desirable, it's a very wide window. And so we couldn't really facilitate moving um the deck any closer uh away from the property line. As shown on the site plan, the proposed result in a total of coverage of forty-two point seventy-eight percent the lot area, whereas the law, by law requires a total lot coverage of thirty-three percent. This represents a reduction of less than ten percent. Uh the proposed lot coverage is relatively minor in nature and being requested to facilitate additional amenity area in the rear of the, of the property.
Please, sir, uh can you wrap up, please?
I, okay.
We don't need to read, you know, pages and pages of, come on, just wrap up.
Problem. Again, it's, it's in the report. I was trying to make a point. I think I've made my point and I'm, I'm pleased to have you answer any questions, please.
Yeah, can we get that picture of the deck up there? Is that, did you cut it, you cut, how much did you cut that deck down or we have a?
No, we didn't, we didn't cut it down. Exi, there's an existing uncovered deck right now. I'm just saying, when we were talking with planning staff, even if we were to cut it in half, they still wouldn't be able to support it. Because we would be asking for about roughly a five percent uh reduction. And that's according to the planner, wasn't enough for him to be able to support it. So i- it, it also, you know, the clients have that sized deck, they're looking to double it.
Maybe they should uh move to the bridal path. My comment, you know, the, I think one thing's very, very uh suitable that they mentioned here, which convinces me of what I, where I'm going with this. Um for instance here, they, yeah, the deck measures seven point eight meters wide, eight point five three meters long. Proposed deck is nearly as wide and as long as the entire two-story dwelling.
It's a small dwelling.
Small dwelling saw a small cover deck. In city staff's opinion, the proposed deck is therefore not subordinate to the primary dwelling and is not minor in nature. Proposed scale of deck could uh potentially, anyway, the point is I agree with them. Okay, so I don't know how the other neighbors, how the members feel, but I do agree with them uh here.
Danny Belissimo has a question.
Okay, so please add any more questions and let's bring this to uh you know, let's, let's make a decision on this, but let's ask some questions.
Okay, so my, my question is, and I'm looking at the site plan and uh there's, there's no neighbors uh input here. Did, did you go around to the neighbors to get at least support for this?
So uh our understanding is that the owners did, um but um nobody was really comfortable to sign any letters, but there was certainly no opposition.
Okay.
We, we, especially from the neighbors to the north, we thought that if it were to negatively impact anybody, it would be them. But they said, no, they, you know, there's our defense there that
For whatever reason, people are neutral on this one. Okay.
Correct.
I, I'm just curious, because this does, it's a, it's very unusual, the size of that covered deck. Um it's a lot of
Saw the furniture plan, it's just a lounge, a jits table and TV.
Anyway, the question
I'm just saying, it's unusually large for a covered deck and I was just surprised and no neighbors wanted to say anything and it's a neutral state, I, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew, a question for just another quick, yeah, so did the picture go out with, there's just a notice goes out. They didn't go around and talk to the neighbors as we want to do.
Um so I don't know how many neighbors they talked to, but I was told that they did talk to some neighbors.
And they did post the sign because I know that was
Yes, of course. We, I, I posted it myself and submitted the uh
Good man, okay. Okay, members, any other questions for Mister Rebo or someone ready to weigh in with a motion?
Yes.
Mister Taylor, sorry. Getting late.
I support the opinion of our chair and the city planning or community planning department uh staff on this matter. I find the size of the deck to be egregious and totally out of character with anything reasonable. And I move refusal.
Egregious, I like that word, and I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Unanimous. Uh sorry, Matthew. We'll see you. Have a good, good uh holidays and New Year. We'll see you in the new year.
Okay, you too.
Egregious was to acquaint by the former uh councillor Grimes, as he then was in his last report about one of our two refusals last week, uh last hearing. When we had four consents in a row. Okay, so here's our last consent, a little different. It's not a consent, it's just kind of two mirror applications. Um staff, Madam Bartosik, I guess we can deal with these together. Thirty-one A, A and B?
Yes.
It's twelve eighteen A and B as is linked in, we'll deal with these together. Uh it's an application or two applications, in fact, two um construct new detached dwellings with detached garages, each requiring seven variances in the zoning bylaw. And uh the speaker on this is Erd, Erdah Hajdari. I don't think there's any other speakers. Nope, that's the only speaker. Uh so welcome, we can get your presentation that came in with your materials on the board. And in addition to that, we have um a cover letter for the rescheduling, uh we have uh planning and Metrolink's plannings position. I think this is a report for information. Yes, it is on both of these mirror applications. Welcome, uh Erdah.
Hello, uh thank you, Mister Chair and committee members. I hope everybody's having somewhat of a good day. It's almost coming to an end. Um my name is Erdah Hidari.
You're the owner of the property, not the agent, correct?
I'm actually the agent and the owner, so I, I am BCI unlicensed and I work for the city of Toronto, but yeah.
Okay.
Um so that's why I thought I could also just represent myself.
Okay, I'm sorry. We have the planning report for, for information. Uh if you want to just quick walk us through uh these two mirror applications here.
Yeah, um so just moving on to the first slide, just why we're even here is because when we purchased the property, they were severed, but the previous owners gave us falsified documents as to which severances they had. We redesigned the houses thinking that we could just make it a little bit more aesthetically pleasing, but also more functional. They intended on selling the houses and not living there. We intend on actually living there there ourselves. Um and when we applied for building permits, they're like, uh, actually you don't have these variances. So um we decided to go ahead with the, a new variance application because we think that the new application actually is a little bit more modest than the one that was approved. Um we have no objections from city planning. We worked together to resolve, they previously had um objections and wanted a refusal, but we worked with them to resolve this. There's been no objections from neighbors and um it's important to note that we've sent out three separate It's important to note that we've sent out three separate variance notices on three different occasions, just because of minor mistakes. I'm here and there in the zoning notices. And all of the minor variances that are requested, I think, meet the four tests. But there's also a lot of precedent throughout the neighborhood, basically. So just moving on to the next slide, I know last time there was some confusion. Basically on which variances we're keeping versus which we're not keeping. So the variances on the left are all of the variances that were approved. The variances on the right are in total. All of the variances for the new applications. So we're keeping the first two, which are highlighted in green. That pertained to the lot area, the lot area itself, and then the lot frontage. The ones highlighted in blue are ones that we're keeping, but we're modifying. So some of them we are modifying such as like the the coverage is increasing a little bit and so is. The side yard setback is decreasing a little bit, but then we are decreasing the FSI from one point zero three to zero point eighty one. And then the other, the last two, so item six and seven are just pertaining to the fact that we have a flat roof. And so they are the same item, but just because we fall under the former Tobago. They're the same variance kind of listed twice that just have to do with sign with the height, sorry. So the all the items on the left that are in red are all items that are being removed as variances. If we can move on to the next slide. And actually two slides over. The next one is the exact same. I just did it for both of the houses. This is just a proposed rendering of the houses. And then if we go on to the next one, I just wanted to do a rendering showing. This is on the right, you'll see the house that was approved. And these are the houses that they wanted to go through with building and then on the left you see our proposal. So just going on to the next slide, thank you. This is just kind of looking at the sightline, so we're pretty much at the corner of Islington and Blower. Our house is on the top left picture that you see right there. But just looking slightly north, the lot right over is actually a dentist's office, so it's a commercial business and then. Three lots over, there's eleven story condo building. If you look directly northeast, it's all pretty much commercial buildings, high rises and. Residential buildings and then just moving on to the next slide. So I just kind of wanted to talk about the surrounding neighborhood and this is just by doing a quick drive through the neighborhood and. I've put in our application drawings in there just to show that it does fit. While bungalows used to be like a huge staple along Islington Avenue, I think split lots are becoming. Like fortunately or unfortunately, but they are becoming a staple of the neighborhood. There's been items such as Chauncey Avenue, which was split into four separate lots. Eleven sixty five and eleven sixty eight Islington Avenue were split into two. And again, these are just all within taking a quick drive anywhere from thirty meters to seven hundred meters of our property. Three Graystone Gardens is actually a low rise building. And eleven thirteen and eleven thirteen AMB, sorry, Islington Avenue, once again. Within less than a kilometer of our property. Just moving on to the next slide. We, the the surrounding neighborhood going just slightly further from five hundred to one point two kilometers. There are dozens and dozens of townhomes basically being developed all along Islington Avenue. Some of them are actually interiors such as the Graystone Gardens townhouse, townhouses, but. The rest of the townhouses are all on Islington Avenue and they are much more closely packed than our proposed houses. And their heights are much higher than our proposed houses. Some of these are also three story instead of two story. And then I just wanted to break down kind of the three major variances. So if we go on to the next slide. Regarding lot coverage, I know for one of them it says forty one, it's just because they rounded up from forty point six. And then the other one says forty, but the houses are pretty identical. So on lot coverage, again, this is just from driving really quickly and lot coverage for nine thirty five AMB Islington. That's forty eight and forty three percent, which is more than what we're requesting. Eleven sixty two and eleven sixty four Islington have a lot coverage of forty point eight, which is once again more than we're requesting and seven seventy four AMB. Clissold, this is actually an interior lot and they have a lot coverage of forty point three. Which is identical to one of ours and slightly less than our next or one of the houses. And then just going on to side yard and to the next slide. The side yards that we're requesting are very common throughout the neighborhood.
You can wrap up, please. Are you doing a nice presentation, but you're going over it though.
Sorry, so just I just like just looking at all of these houses, they all have. Either side yard setbacks that are equivalent to ours, or they have side yard setbacks that are much less than ours. Such as ninety nine AMB Chauncey is zero point forty three for interior. Which is less than what we're requesting. And then if we just move forth to building height. So we're requesting a maximum height of eight point thirty four. And once again, just looking throughout the neighborhood, even in flat roofs like nine A and nine B Chauncey Avenue. The flat roof height is nine point fifty eight, which is over a meter of what we're requesting. But a lot of these other houses that have pitched roofs, their wall heights are quite high as well. So just going on to the next slide.
Okay, if you can wrap up, there's no one here. You've gone way over. I know you're going through.
Okay. I'll just summarize.
Just to summarize, please. The city is in favor here, right? No neighbors opposed, so.
Yeah, we have no neighbors opposed, the city is in favor and our new proposal, I think is like modest compared to what was approved before.
Yeah, I just have one little just housekeeping issue. Your name is Erda Hajdari, you said you're the agent.
Hajdari, yeah.
Yeah, and it looks like on the application filed in December, it looks like the owner is listed as Pavlo Subashi.
Pavlo Subashi. So Aldo Subashi is my fiance, Pavlo Subashi is my father in law. So we purchased the houses and the split, because they were already split, we thought we would get one or we're getting at one of the houses.
Okay, anyway, I'm just saying you're known, that's all I was pointing out on title, correct?
No.
But you are by marriage, you are.
Yes.
Thank, I was just a little confused by that. Does anyone have any substantive comments as my questions?
Substantive? No, no, I don't. Just I'm prepared to make a motion if no one has any questions.
Yep, I'm very, very good presentation material.
Very good presentation. Love the design of the houses. You're aware of the MetroLinks advisory on this property?
Yes.
Just a standard advisory, but I just wanted to make sure you were aware of it and also urban forestry condition number two, I believe.
Yes, number two.
Number two, so I'm prepared to make a motion. I believe this meets the four tests. According to the Planning Act and move for approval subject to urban forestry condition number two.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson. Thank you. All in favor? It looks like it's unanimous.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you, Miss Hajdari. Enjoy your new homes.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
I'm gonna live in one and not both.
I'm gonna live in one. The one with the curve is mine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays. Okay. Our next application is item number thirty two zero Titan Road. This matter was previously deferred. Hold on, this is not, this is probably already dealt with.
We did, yes, it was deferred.
Okay, this one's deferred. Okay, sorry. When I heard Mr. Eagleman, I remembered that we already done this one this morning or this afternoon. Next application is thirty three two two four Van Duzen Boulevard. It's an application to construct a one story renovation with two variances. We have the minutes in the previous meeting, we have transportation addressing the deferral MetroLinks advisory. And materials from the previous hearing. The speaker on this application is Graham Barrett. Mr. Barrett, welcome.
Good afternoon, committee members. Graham Barrett, agent for the owner, SGL Design, Planning and Design, nineteen forty seven Blower West.
Yeah, not much of the one story renovation and two small little variances related to parking.
Yes, this is pretty straightforward. I can be extremely brief because I know you're dying to get out of here and I have to pick my daughter up from daycare in twenty minutes. So as you said, item was deferred on September twenty ninth to address comments from transportation. It's a small one story renovation. A parking space which originally proposed the side of the dwelling with a width of two point three meters, where three point two meters was required. This was the only variance required. Transportation staff expressed a concern about the width of this parking space as it would be somewhat obstructed by the wall of the existing home. Or result in a car door being opened over the property line. So transportation staff recommended that the parking space be relocated closer to the street. And that the driveway be widened, so a parking space with dimensions of five point six meters by two point six meters could be achieved. And this has been shown on the revised plans. So there are now two variances proposed for a parking space in the front yard and for parking space with two point six meters, three point two meters required. Parking of cars in the front of a home is the norm on Van Duzen Boulevard. Many of the older houses on the street have fairly narrow driveways, leading to old garages or parking spaces at the side. And many likely would not comply with the requirements of the bylaw if they were built today. Most of the residents on the street park their cars on the driveways in front of the house rather than in these tiny garages or confined side yard parking spaces. This will have no impact on neighbors or the street. This is exceedingly minor, no concerns from staff, no letters of opposition, transportation concerns have been addressed. I've read the MetroLinks comments, so I'm aware it's just an advisory and that's fine. And the owner submitted five letters of support, including both adjacent neighbors and three across the street. And I'm of the opinion this passes the four tests. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, members, any questions for Mr. Barrett or is someone ready for a motion?
Danny Benesmo is ready for a motion. Such a minor, small homes, minor addition, I find the variances are acceptable and move for approval.
Okay, thank you. Second for that, Ms. Alderson, all in favor? Unanimous approval. Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Have a happy holidays, happy new year. See you next year.
Yeah, same to you. Take care.
Okay, and now our last application for the year, our last hearing for the year, one fifty Hillside Avenue. It's an application to. Build a new detached dwelling with an attached garage with four variances. And we have. This matter was previously deferred, we have the minutes, we have the applicant's revisions. With no changes to the variance, we have forestry, looking for something. I lost my page, perhaps someone can assist me. I lost the last page. Anyway, I think there's a forestry condition.
Yeah, I think they're asking for refusal of variance number one, I have.
Okay, and we have two speakers, David Eagleman for the applicant and Carmen Schwalm, the neighbor next door, one fifty two.
Mr. Chair and members, I'd like to bring to your attention, the area resident is not present on the call. We did reach out, attempt to reach out to them multiple times. But no response back.
Okay. So let's hear from Mr. Eagleman.
This good afternoon, Mr. Chair and committee members. Thank you for having me this evening, this afternoon.
Okay, so the matter was deferred in November the twenty fourth, we're back here. This was for proper public notice to require, identify all required variances.
Yes, that is. That is correct, Mr. Chair, and. Through you, Mr. Chair, I can provide a brief presentation mainly to address the forestry report, but I will also briefly address the variances.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, so through you, Mr. Chair, before getting into the variances. I would like to mention that other than the report from urban forestry, I'm not aware of any other. Objections expressed by way of a report or by way of a letter to the Committee of Adjustment by any other city departments or neighbors.
Yes.
And regarding the urban forestry report. I will note that urban forestry previously recommended refusal of the application. Prior to the application being deferred from the November twenty fourth hearing date. Because of the proposed integral garage. Which was previously, the integral garage was unrelated to any of the variances being requested. Previously and now, so there was no, there is no variances related to the garage. And that garage is permitted as of right. Similarly, the proposed FSI variance is unrelated to the injury or removal of. The bylaw protected tree in the front yard that is of concern to urban forestry. That tree within the front yard is within the as of right building envelope. I am not an arborist, however, the intention here is to preserve and maintain as many bylaw protected trees as possible. And an as of right dwelling could be constructed on the subject property, which would still necessitate the injury or removal. Of the bylaw protected tree in the front yard.
And and I, I, we had a seminar from them that's where they told us it's only the incremental amount that the tree would otherwise be affected. We have no, we are, we have no right to complain, but yet we often see that they do. In fact, you're adding. How many squared, like eight square meters?
Through you, Mr. Chair, it is eight square meter, eight point zero five square meters.
But they do mention the driveway. They mentioned the driveway, so.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, they previously. Recommended refusal prior to the deferral solely based on the driveway. And and not related to any variances. And that speaks in it of itself that they're recommending refusal not based on any variances previously. And that demonstrates that they're they're concerned with the as of right building envelope.
Exactly. I've heard, I don't know if anyone else has any questions for you. I think I've heard enough from you.
Through you, Mr. Chair, if I just may add quickly that. The, the FSI is very minor, like, like we discussed, eight point oh five square meters. The height is just over one foot, similar to the wall height was, which is just over one foot. And the front stairs is only one riser up to the front entrance. It will have essentially no impact. So I'm of the opinion that this proposal meets the test under section forty five one.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Eagleman? You know. We have a seminar, they tell us that the building as of right affects the tree, there's nothing we can do. And here eight square meters over what's permitted as of right. Anyway.
It's not just any, I will say, I will comment, it's not just any tree, it is a massive. Tree with a canopy that stretches well beyond the lot.
Sure, I would, I would imagine perhaps that tree, you know, I'm sure the homeowners, Mr. Eagleman perhaps confirmed would love to save the tree. And take whatever steps are necessary to try to protect it. I don't know if that's possible.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, we have an arborist report on that.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do not have an arborist report at this point. That is something we will provide to urban forestry once we go through their permit process, but. Yes, I do understand it is a large tree in the front yard and it would be ideal to preserve that tree, however. Like I said, a building could be constructed as of right with a driveway. If you're providing a garage, it has to have a driveway. And there is essentially no place where you could put a driveway on the subject property that could go around this tree, so.
It's hard to believe a point two. Increment is not any different from who was a point six complied. Especially since you're, you know, it's a, you have a height variance or you're you're building up as well, so. Anyway, I don't know, does anyone else have any, any questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Perhaps we're all aware of this, I don't know. On November twenty third, urban forestry requested. We impose their condition number one with respect to a city owned tree. With the, Mr. Eagleman, would the imposition of that condition be? Damaging or nervous making to you?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to answer your question, member Taylor. I believe on this application, urban forestry did recommend a standard condition number two, which I believe. That is the. City permit request. However, regardless of whether it's standard condition one or two, I have no issues with those conditions because. At the end of the day, we have to go through urban forestry regardless whether the committee imposes those conditions or not.
Yeah, I see in my list on the checklist, it was two and five, but obviously there is tree number, a city tree, which is would be UF one. So.
Yeah, I'm looking at the November twenty third, twenty twenty two. Twenty, yeah, November twenty third, twenty twenty two standalone memo. And it's definitely condition one that they're asking for.
Yeah, and I see there's a previous November seventh memo. How is that different? That was.
They're also asking us to deny variance number one. To deny variance number one.
Yeah, through, through you, Mr. Chair, if I can just clarify.
Yeah.
I believe Mr. Taylor is correct, the the right condition would be condition number one, however. On their memorandum for this hearing date. How they submit a memorandum as well as a a report for specific files. The memorandum indicates condition two, but I think that was a mistake.
Yeah, and if you look at the standalone November seventh, it refers to submission of a complete application of permit to injury city owned tree. So it's set out in the November seventh, which was before your last deferral. So it's set out in the November seventh, which was before your last deferral.
Correct, and and condition number one is correct.
Yeah. Okay, um, any other questions or some ready for motion?
No question, just a comment. In in my view, um, the tree is going to be affected regardless of whatever variance we're looking at. It's a, it's a new house going up and a driveway has to be constructed. So I think they just picked variance one as the variance to refuse, but even if the coverage or the FSI is at point six, the tree is still affected and a permit would be required. Just my comment.
Yeah. And that's what they told us in this seminar we had, that if it's as of right, we have no, no, you know, they, it's unfortunate, but applicant is permitted to, it's only if the incremental amount is the the part that impacts the tree. And as Laura said, it's a huge tree. It goes across probably, you know, the, apparently the root system is normally is, it could be as big as the drip line, so there we have it. Okay, so uh, thank you, Mr. Palmerson. Ready for motion?
I'm ready to move a motion. Um, uh, variances requested are minor in nature. We meet the four tests in the Planning Act, so I'll move for approval subject to um urban forestry condition. I guess it's probably condition one. Given the tree is in the city Boulevard.
Okay, second for that motion, last motion of the year. Mr. Taylor, all in favor? You're opposed? Okay, the motion carries four to one with Ms. Alderson dissenting. Thank you, Mr. Eagleman. And uh, we now at our last, we have a happy, healthy holidays and we'll see you back in the new year. You're typically our last uh applicant for the evening. I don't know why that is, but okay, and now we.
Well, we're not all going out for drinks tonight?
Virtually, yeah.
Virtually, yes. I'll have a drink and toast you.
Okay, same here. Um, so motion to adjourn and uh it's been great working with all of you, all the panel members, the staff, thank you, Nicole, Adam, um, two Adams, Annalisa, Nicole, Phil, Barb, I don't know who I'm forgetting. I feel like uh I'm on romper room or something. Some of us know what that is all about. Um, remember. Okay, happy and safe holidays to everyone. Barb?
Yes, happy holidays, everyone.
And we'll. Thank you to the staff.
Thanks to all the staff for their hard work and, you know, if we were in person, we'd be uh seeing you in person, but hopefully next year.
Yes.
Happy and safe.
Be well, be well, everyone. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Yep.